Hey. You're not doing much of a comedian, are you?
I knew this was gonna fix me.
Hey. How about that? Do you live... That's birthday. Don't be shy for something.
Oh, yeah.
Your phone's all... Oh, we get it.
Yes, why not?
I could look at the scene for paint, too. I know she made a bunch of my objects with me.
Yeah.
Get it.
I'm getting shorter, this chair is gonna be taller.
Definitely really short, you don't know.
You're fine.
Definitely really short.
I can see all the screen. What kind of... Have you got any new old cars now?
Probably a couple.
I gotta get my handy over there one third. Go in with me and say. Shh. I'll be a few minutes with you. He's got way late. About this. Would you put... There. Did he bring... He brought this to us. Christopher. Did you pass this up? Did you pass this up?
Yeah.
I can't see all the screen.
What kind of... Have you got any new old cars now?
Probably a couple.
I gotta get my handy over there one third. Go in with me and say. Shh. We'll be still. Be a few minutes with you. He's got way late. About this. Would you put... There. Okay. Did he bring... He brought this to us.
Hey, what's on that here?
Yes, sir. Christopher. Did you pass this up? Did you pass this up?
Yeah.
I want to pull one there. Yeah, this guy's... This is in there. Two of those things, Paul. That is, uh... Don't know what that was. Did you do it? Okay.
Got a few more minutes. We have a board of supervisors. It's kind of way late out there. He'll be in here in a few minutes. Hold on, there's a question on the budget calendar. The budget calendar talks about authorized advertising. The budget calendar is supposed to be April 9th budget. We don't have an April 9th budget. That I can find. Nikki. Nikki. We don't have an April 9th budget. That's on the budget calendar. It's kept. I was looking back.
Can we adopt maybe my challenge that everybody has something?
Yeah. We can pull it out. I might have more help just to change it. Okay. These checkbooks. We could go ahead and leave. I mean, I need to... Yeah. We should. We don't have an April 9th budget. That's on the budget calendar. It's kept. I was looking back.
Can we adopt maybe my challenge that everybody has something?
Yeah. We can pull it out. I might have more help just to change it. Okay. These checkbooks. Yeah. We could go ahead and leave. I mean, I need to... Yeah. I think, of course, I thought this was... I think it's really hard to say the word. We should pass this like we should. Hold on, let's do this. Okay. Hold on, let's do this. Hold on, let's do this. Okay. Come on, we're still standing. Okay. Come on, we're still standing. Okay. These checkbooks. Yeah. We could go ahead and leave. I mean, I need to... Yeah. I think it's right. 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 I think, of course, I thought this was... I think it's really hard to say the word. We should pass this like we should. I think it's right. I think it's right. I think it's right. I think it's right. Hold on, let's do this. Okay. Come on, we're still standing. 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 Come on, Carol County Board of Supervisors meeting back in order. Do I have a motion to bring us back from closed session?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, start with Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes, Robbie.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
Yes.
And I also need a motion to so certify that what we said we was gonna talk about, we talked about.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we certified executive session. The... We went into executive session pursuant to certain points of law, and that was the only thing we discussed.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Bob, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
Robbie.
Yes.
I say yes. Philip?
Yes.
John Neal?
Yes.
All right. I ask Robbie to do the invocation and the pledge.
All rise, please. Heavenly Father, we take this opportunity to thank you for this day that you provided for us. We thank you for the many blessings that you've passed down upon us. Lord, we ask that you watch over us and protect us and guide us as we go through this business and conduct the business in a fair and... In a fair manner to all. Lord, we ask that you keep us safe on our travels back home, just watch over us. And once again, Lord, just thank you for our blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the revolver for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'll do it a second at a time. I don't feel right. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Approval of the consent agenda.
Approval of the retro agenda. Excuse me. Do I have a... Want to get approval for the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add something.
Okay. All right. What would you like to add?
I'd like to add something. I would just refer to the governor of Virginia, okay? Pertain to him.
You want specific time for that? Over the...
Uh, yes. I'd like it on the agenda.
I will put it, uh... After committee appointments. Okay. Any other motion?
I'll amend my motion to include Bob's request.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Start with you. John Neal?
Uh, yes.
Philip? Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
And yes. All right. Now, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or does anything need to be pulled out?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to either amend or pull out the budget calendar, and I'd also like to pull out the airport taxes to get some more information on that, please.
Okay.
I think the budget calendar was a issue with a date. Nikki's aware of it. I think she's gonna correct that. And it says the ninth, and it needs to be the 22nd. So we can leave that in there as long as it's noted it needs to be corrected. But I do need to pull the airport taxes out to get some questions about that answer, please.
All right. Do I have a second?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. Start with you. John Neal?
Yes.
Philip? Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
And yes. I'll remember your name after. All right. We'll discuss the airport taxes.
Can you... Nikki, can you give us an explanation of what that is, please?
I can. What that is, is a budget transfer. Every year, the personal property tax that's paid by air... By citizens that have aircraft at the airport, those taxes are remitted back to the airport as an investment from the county. The number is larger this year for two reasons. A, there... It seems like those taxes have gone up significantly because it used to run about eight thousand. So it's $4,000 up this year. But also fiscal year seventeen and... Well, no, not fiscal year. Tax year seventeen and eighteen were paid out in this fiscal year. There were no taxes remitted last year.
Okay. Yes.
And basically, what that is, is a transfer from an overage in another source of the budget, which was the land acquisition from Precita.
So this is over and above the what was budgeted?
Yes, sir.
It went up that much?
Yes.
Okay.
But luckily, we did have a savings in land acquisition from Precita to offset that cost, so the overall budget will not increase.
Do we have a specific agreement with the airport? Do we pay a certain amount? Or is it just based on the taxes?
It's based on the taxes paid.
Uh, this part is based on the taxes?
Yes.
Oh, and I think what Rex was asking is, and you correct me if I'm wrong, are we... We give them a set amount each month, correct? We...
For debt service, previously approved debt service, and for two... For an expansion. I think there were two items. An expansion of the runway. There was another capital expenditure out there that we pay a portion of that's outside of the return of the personal property taxes. And that was basically a board agreement. I don't remember the year, but I think that the board... This has been in practice for several years, returning the personal property taxes.
Well, I have some issues with... I understand that they stopped selling gas to the citizens out there for off-road type vehicles and stuff like that, and I'm not too happy about that. And also...
I can answer that if you'd like.
All right.
Our fuel supplier does not allow that to happen, number one. And number two, that fuel is not designed for the use in automobiles. There's no road tax paid on it or anything of that nature, so it's been a courtesy in the past, but because we have a new fuel supplier, they've asked us not to do that.
That doesn't apply to lawnmowers and things and boats, but it does apply to vehicles. You can't put it in the vehicle. Correct.
But we don't have any idea of where it's going when they sell it in the can.
Other... The other issue I have, we purchased a bunch of sewer line for the airport to hook on to, to the sewer system, and we were stuck with that. Why... Why did that... We know anything why that broke down? The PSA's got a bunch of pipelines.
I don't know. I can answer that.
Could you look into that, Steve, please?
All right. Do I have a motion to approve this expenditure line item?
I make a motion and a second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Are you talking about the...
Motion to approve this...
The pipe?
No, the airport... The taxes. Airport taxes.
I vote yes. Okay. Or second, and I...
Second, there we go. All right. I have a motion and a second. I'll start with you, John Neal.
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Being on the Air Commission, does that affect my vote at all?
Being on the Air Commission, it's not a personal interest.
I vote yes, then.
And I vote yes. All right. What else we got? All right. I guess next on the agenda is Benny Robinson.
Yeah, approach, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Mr. Chairman, congratulations on the recent board elections, and thank you for the joint working session between the Board of Supervisors and the PSA this January passed. That meeting is why I come to speak. We listened attentively, and although we were at an audible disadvantage and lacking financial handouts, we pieced conversations into this summary. We believe meeting notes and back... And feedback serves as a useful critique. Being slightly imperfect, we have summarized what we think we heard. And notice that I am speaking in third person plural, "we," as in several of us have collaborated to arrive at this summary. Here is what we heard. Clarifications are in order and welcomed. It would be our desire to have you comment, and that corrections would be substantive in an objective criteria format. So here we go. Number one, we cannot conclude that a single PSA project is now nor has ever been financially self-sufficient. Simply put, none are paying their way individually or collectively. Number two, I would ask that you note Ms. Montgomery's comments regarding a financial gap being placated by an infusion of money by the IDA. We really need to understand that, given the fact that the IDA does not generate revenue on a steady repetitive basis. Further curiosities blossom, given the repetitive statements from Dr. Littrell that county taxpayers do not subsidize the PSA. We would respectfully request financial data that vilifies or denies the IDA gap and Dr. Littrell's assertion of no taxpayer subsidies. If the IDA gap makes up the shortfall, then where does that money come from? An explanation is in order. I would ask, number three, I would ask that you note Ms. Dalton's comment to a real-life example of door-to-door canvassing for user signup attempts and its reported failure. In her words, "None could get close to 51% participation." Could this be the reality check asked by one supervisor that maybe more people do not want the water than those who do? Said in a little different way, "Could this be the contributor as to why the PSA did not bother to talk to potential customers, taking the easy path of invoking mandatory non-users while declaring to the USDA as having done differently?" We heard the plea for a marketing strategy, and we also heard the plea for a kindler, gentler PSA, one that bothers to explain things. Number four, we acknowledge Mr. Merritt's concern. We, as Carol County taxpayers, know we're on the hook for repayment of debt. That, sir, is our secondary biggest concern, our ability to repay existing loans before committing to more debt. Note, our first concern is transforming the PSA to do the morally right thing to all citizens concerned. Number five, please note Ms. Montgomery's comment regarding promoting our water. From an unintended observation, we concluded it's more about promoting overall project expansion than getting water to those areas that need it most, with economic multiplicity in mind. That causes us to raise eyebrows. It could be revealing... It could be a revealing audit to follow the money of projects and let that examination speak for itself. Number six, we heard that it is fair to conclude that the Cliffview Project has 60 users financing 260 potential users. Understand what we are saying. 60 paying users for 260 potential users. That's 23%, not near the 51% requirement. Number seven, we heard supervisors repeatedly ask for budget information that either does not exist or when it does is incomplete. Perhaps a balance sheet, an inclusive cash flow, and a budget analysis would yield the financial examination being sought after. Hypothetically, that could clarify the gap and remedy many unanswered questions. Number eight, we, like many of you, do not believe 51% signup will ever yield financial health and repayment of money without taxpayer subsidies or unaffordable water rates. Clearly, 51% is a doubtful break-even point and yields a less-than-self-sustaining venture. While the USDA may have offered such guidance, that is just what it is, guidance. Board action... Board actions make financial soundness, which must carry the day where guidance leaves off. We summarize by conjecture. Carol County is not living up to the USDA loan terms and conditions. Projects are not self-sustaining. Signups do not meet the minimum standard. The PSA has not treated all customers in a fair and reasonable manner. Carol County has been warned the later is a violation of USDA loan guarantees and Virginia statutes. Financial audits are only one way of determining fiscal compliance. Conformity to loan terms and conditions are yet another. Could it be Carol County is in default as we speak? Number 10, we have heard hand-wringing over lost revenue from 79 non-users. Allow me to share some reality. A fair number of those 79 non-users are not paying anyway, evidenced by their admission here in the past and liens having been attached to some properties. Money you never receive is not revenue lost. Simple accounting. It is, however, an opportunity loss of capital. Offsetting is not required. Number 11, I would ask that Mr. Durbin present his progress on modifying the USDA loan agreement language, which caused such a fuss in the repeal's deferred effectivity. And number 12, I would ask Mr. Durbin to explain why creating subcommittees to work toward unraveling and providing solutions to this quagmire places us in harm's way with the Freedom of Information Act. Open, honest, public meetings cannot be a violation, can it? There's an old catchphrase worth repeating. If you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. And when you get there, will you know that you've arrived? Together, we can solve anything. We can solve problems, but if we attack each other, we'll never solve anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next on the agenda is the county debt policy. Each of you have a copy of the policy that Robbie and I have been working on for probably several years. It's one kind of taken from Henraker County, but the majority of counties have debt policies. Carol County does not. That's kind of why we brought it forward, and I want to know what each and every one of the board of supervisors' thoughts on this debt policy. What, you have a motion on it, or?
Mr. Chairman, this came from the Virginia Association of County Supervisor Workshop.
Yes, well, we had the... Falls under... We had debt... Shoot, excuse me. Had budgeting counties. I think everybody was passed out some of that information. Y'all, I think y'all were given a booklet on it last year. Y'all didn't get one. And the majority of counties have a debt policy. When we consider debt, you know, we should do several things. Number one, we should do a debt analysis and should have a policy to cover that debt going forward. I mean, this is where... This is how we got to this position now. My thoughts, anyway. So if anybody has any questions about... I think you run some numbers on it, Nikki? Did you send out some stuff to us?
I did. I was... Dr. Littrell had asked me where we were in relation to the requirements in the policy. I will state that, on my first glance, the seven and a half percent could be a little low. We're allowed up to 10% on state code, but, I mean, it's better to have less than. There's no doubt about it. According to my calculations, we were within the guidelines that are set forth in this policy with the general obligation debt for the county.
But that didn't include...
That did not include the PSA.
The PSA.
That's correct.
The document I produced included the PSA debt.
Why is PSA not included in it? I know that they carry that debt, but we pay that debt, correct? I mean, we're financially responsible for that debt if they don't pay it.
We are financially responsible for the availability fee.
So if they... If the PSA does not be able... Cannot make a payment on their debt... On one of their debt policies, one of their debt... One of their loans, that just... I mean, we don't have to... We don't have to stand behind that?
I would imagine that we do.
Okay. Well, then, in my opinion, that should be included as part of our debt, because if we... If it's something that... I mean, that... Their part was somewhere close to $19 million, I think.
Okay. I understand that. From an accounting standpoint, we don't consider revenue and expenses for the PSA in the calculation because they do collect user fees, so I guess it's better.
But we have a million dollars going to the PSA each and every year.
Yes.
To use to go into their debt service fund...
Yes.
To pay the debt.
Yes, that's correct.
So I guess we may just need to make a definition for what we consider debt.
Exactly.
You could... A significant amount of what we're talking about...
You could, a significant amount of what we're talking about with the PSA debt and the county's obligation probably falls under moral obligation debt-
Okay.
...or revenue, revenue bonds as opposed to general obligation. So you always could consider including moral obligation financing in this, in addition to general obligation financing in your debt policy.
Well, that's my-
That's the discrepancy. You've got moral obligation, you've got general obligation.
Well, my thought is, if it's something that we could be held liable to have to pay, it should be included in our debt policy. I mean, that's just-
And we'll have more than just the PSA, because there's more moral obligations out there besides PSA.
Well, I understand that, yeah.
We've got school board. We have the school board.
That debt is included.
Right. What debt is not included in this?
PSA.
Right.
Moral obligation that we have on Wildwood is not included.
But we-
There's some IDA debt that is also not included, but through moral obligation.
With solid waste.
Solid waste, I would imagine is another one.
I know, but we don't, we don't pay solid waste any money.
No.
They can derive their own funds.
They still have moral obligation in the event of failure.
But their revenues are sufficient.
Yes.
I mean-
Yeah, but they have, sometimes have to borrow millions of dollars to open up one of those sales, don't they? I mean, they, they don't have a surplus of several million dollars in it, I mean, right?
They're in pretty healthy shape, actually, though.
Okay, well, I stand corrected, then.
I guess it's just a definition of what you want to see included in those calculations would help is getting, gathering all the moral obligations that are up there, because you also have regional water.
We could separate into different classifications of debt and have a percentage that applies to each.
Well, I just think if-
If there's different purposes for having reasons why you would do it that way, then you wouldn't have to get into the whole thing of mixing in the operations of all the different things.
I think, but-
And like, then you figure it out, you know, the IDA doesn't have regular income, but the PSA does. I mean, it's different situations.
I think because we contribute money to that IDA debt, I mean, to the PSA debt, we should be, that is probably something that we should consider debt, if, since we do contribute money.
But we should get credit for the revenue that comes in also, if you're going to do that.
Well, can they support theirselves? That's, I mean, that's coming down to the question. If something happens with the PSA, they can't support theirselves. Am I right or wrong?
The only thing that happens, we lose all these customers, that the board is working in a direction possible.
You're still, I don't think you're understanding. They cannot support theirs, they cannot, can they make those loan payments without the county providing this money?
Okay, let me, make sure you understand that $1 million that is mentioned over and over again, three-quarters of that was not PSA-initiated.
It goes to the PSA, though.
But we didn't ask for it. That's regional water and-
There's a separate line item for regional water.
It was, it was that and the so-called shovel and you primed it from back in, you know, 8, 10 years ago.
But that, that was, been portrayed as economic development.
The board approved all of it.
But, but that's still debt we have to pay, correct?
Yeah. If you say "we," you mean the county.
The county.
Yes.
Well, if you're going to count debt, are you going to count the revenue then? That, I mean, if you're going to do a total accounting, if we're going to PSA or whoever the debt, you're going to have to include the revenue.
That's in their, in their budget. We have to supplement their budget for 1. so million, millions of dollars.
Go ahead.
Would it be possible to count in the calculation the 1 million in the debt service payments that we send? Or are you, how you about the whole 40 million? Because some of that they're paying outside of the million dollars that we sent.
I guess my biggest concern, the 1 million that we supplement, that goes to debt service for the PSA, ultimately, what loans does that protect? What loans does that cover? You understand what I'm, what I'm after?
It's the CIP that should be in the packet.
That, that should be, in my opinion, I would feel like, because that is something we're supplementing, we should recognize that as debt to the county, to the county general. Am I right or am I wrong?
I agree.
Let me give you another example. I just asked you what you feel about this, the Wildwood payment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we got a Wildwood payment that we sent with a 5.2 million. Okay, we have a moral obligation in the event of failure, okay? So it sounds like to me you want those numbers also.
It should be. I think that should be, I mean, that's something that we-
I mean, these are some pretty, I mean, this will extrapolate out into some really large numbers.
That's, I mean, that, to me, is our raw debt. I mean, you know?
But it's, as the accountant in me, okay, typically, we're looking at debt service, okay? Not just the debt, but just the debt service alone, where you, can your financial resources meet your obligations currently-
Yeah.
-and within the next year.
Yeah.
It's typically, from an accounting standpoint, what we do, when you start looking at a debt policy and including moral obligations that are spread out amongst, you know, three, seven, eight localities potentially, we end up with some really large numbers that could be alarming.
Okay, debt is what we're going to be, let me, I'm having trouble explaining what I'm looking at here.
Like, if it's a cosigning loan, for example?
Yeah, if we're making a payment on it, if we're making a payment, it should be considered as our, part of our debt. I mean, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, oh, I understand completely.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that, I don't, you know, I don't care if you include the total debt or what we're, what the amount of our payments are for a year. That should be, that should be the debt, included in our debt.
Is your concern the total exposure, or is your concern the payments as a function of our ability to pay?
The payments, the payments as a function of our ability to pay.
Maybe we should take another stab at the language in this thing.
But also exposure.
I think Steve should look at it.
So also, do you, do you want to see all the moral obligations to which the county has signed on, or the share of it? Because if you guys-
The share, our share, I think, our shares.
The 10 million dollar debt, you're sharing the third.
Yeah.
You want to see that third?
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify.
And I just, I think that was, was losing it in translation, because, you know, I'm not an accountant by no means. I can balance a checkbook and I can keep up with stuff like that, but I can no, no accountant by no means. But I look at it as a, as a common man out here on the street that would look at it every day. If, if there's a possibility that I'm going to have to pay it, that's part of my debt, you know?
That goes back to the point about the PSA. The million dollars pays a good portion of all that debt, but not all of it.
Yeah.
The exposure there is all of it.
Yeah.
Even though the PSA, whether it's self-sustaining or not, that you pay some of it.
Well, see, that-
And, and, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. That $1 million, I think, is what I'm more concerned about for, as part of our yearly debt, you know? I mean, I-
And see, that's actually in the expenditures itself.
Right. That gets handled.
See, that's where it goes back. We, I don't know how many times we've tried to get all this debt together, and then we find out, well, there's another one here, another one there. When we make a determination to borrow money again, for any, for a water line, to build a elementary school, or whatever, we need to, to know where we stand debt-wise. We should have a debt analysis, we should have debt policy. And if we, Steve Durbin, if you would just look at the language and make recommendations for that for us next time.
Be happy to.
I think we'd be better off, we get semantics figured out here and make it work with Nikki.
And I think it would help us a lot to know what our moral obligation, and how much of our moral obligation is. Yeah, whatever it is, yeah. Don't mean to be difficult, I just-
Trying to understand.
Trying to understand, yeah.
All right, let's move on to-
Uh, excuse me. The county may, I don't want to talk about stuff in executive session back there. It's possible we may get some grant money in the future, all right? Do you, do you include that as revenue or what?
It's not in the debt policy.
No, that's money that's earmarked for a specific purpose. Usually, there's a performance agreement associated with it. So you can't, you can't, at your discretion, use it to pay debt or for something else once it's committed to that purpose. So I defer to council and the CDA to realize.
We, we can create today, so.
Well, maybe, that's what we need, is semantics on how we determine this, maybe separate it, separate it out with different terminology.
That doesn't mean that you can't say that there's money potentially freed up that we might have spent that way, that we don't have to.
Exactly.
But that's a whole different thing.
I think you're talking about something that's a little, a little bit different. What, what the purpose of the debt policy is, is to, is to evaluate whether, in giving the grants and other benefits, whether the county can afford to carry that debt-
Exactly.
-in a responsible way. And so you really just look at the debt, not the, not-
Yeah, but if you-
Good time getting at it.
Looks like to me, if you look only at the debt, then you, you get a misleading picture.
Well, that's what, you look at other things other than just the debt policy, but, but what goes into the debt policy really is limited to general obligation we might consider.
Tax support, really, is what it's going. That's typically what the debt policies are referring to, is tax-supported debt.
Yeah, you look at total budgets from the county and the school board, then you look at the debt service per capita, per person in Carroll County, and then one of them, I forgot it.
Assess value.
Assess value. We know what the assess value is, and my number was different than yours, and then you had, there was something I hadn't excluded, what friend gives us each and every year, that total value of all property in Carroll County. Yeah. But that's, that's how you make those analysis. Anyway, let's move on and pass that off.
Let me ask you one question, but just a clarification. About halfway down, it says, "All debt which is secured by the general obligation of a county must be approved by a public referendum." Are you talking about an election, or are you talking about a public hearing?
Yes, if we were to go in debt X number of dollars, then we would have to take that and have an elec, have a referendum.
Kind of like what Pulaski County done on the new middle school.
By law, general obligation debt for a county has to be approved by a referendum.
So are you intending that to apply even things where, like we've done in the past, where say the IDA is going to buy some school buses or?
That's where we're going to have to get the terminology fixed on this.
Because that would apply the way this is.
Well, and, and I think it, it's an amount, too. Is it, does it include an amount of what?
It says "all" debt in this.
Yeah, it says "all."
It does say it has.
Oh.
That's why it needs to be looked at.
Depending on the definitions, that could include the leases on the sheriff's fee and stuff we're doing now. And I don't think you would want a public referendum for 160,000 a year.
It needs to have some limits set on it.
There's special language in those deals to make it moral obligation.
Yes.
You still have to look at it, determine what you can afford, but it is different from general obligation.
I think you looking over this would be a great idea.
Like, it's a step in the right direction, anyway.
Soon as we solve all this debt problems, we need to send a copy to the United States Treasury.
All right, the next one is the county position paper. And essentially, all that is, is a, if people come forward to the board or staff wants to make a recommendation for certain things, it's kind of like a guideline for purpose, why they requesting board action, background, pros and cons, staff recommendations, stakeholders, fiscal impact to Carroll County, statutory authority, and the request. I mean, we've had several people come forward and ask for financing. We, it would be good if we had these things. And I think we should utilize that as a, if anybody requested money or a change in-
Is this, may I ask a question?
Yep.
Just for clarification, is this outside of the budget process, or would you like?
Yeah, included in the budget process. In the future, we ain't going to probably have time this time, but if someone comes forward and say, "We need X number of dollars," you miss, say, "Hey, fill this out."
So instead of the letters we get, or-
Yeah, that, this gets us more-
Or if you would like this stuff.
Yeah, this is more specific.
Gives us more information.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
What about a capital outlay for a fire truck?
Yeah, if they, but that's going to be in the CIP. This, this would be more like, I don't know.
What debt is debt, be it a $500,000 water line or a fire truck, either one.
I look, this is more, something presented to the board. This is what staff does most state agencies. When anything goes into the general assembly, this is what they utilize. Go have a motion on that.
I make a motion that we implement the county position paper for requests for board action as presented.
I'll second. All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor, start with each other.
Ask one more question.
Yes.
Now, when you say board action, is this a fiscal action or any action?
Anything would be brought to us.
I mean, if somebody wants to abandon the road or anything that-
If somebody wanted to what?
Abandon the road, or does any action?
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, because that has fiscal, you know, all those things, they should fill us out.
Well, I mean, some things have budget, like if somebody wants money for a project versus they want, you know, just the board to approve something. I just want to make sure you're talking about both things or?
I think, I think both things, this would be sufficient for all of it.
If it's got a, if it's got a financial impact, it can be listed also.
Yep. All right, where was it?
What happens if, if Lord forbid, Carroll County lucked out and, and got an industry coming in, but had, sometimes you got to spend money, be it state money or whatever.
That would be up to us, make a determination. I'm not sure whether that would be required. This is essentially for us, people bringing stuff to us, wanting to spend money. It's just a simple form to fill out.
Yep.
All right, where was it? Joe, did I get a yes for you?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I say yes, Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Litchell?
Yes.
Yes. I just, we, we really need to take a long, hard look at this, Nikki, or, and if y'all see problems, you need to be taking a look at it.
All right, come on, start a public hearing 654 on the real property tax exemption for Does anyone wish to speak on that?
I've signed up, Rick.
Okay. I didn't know which, where it's all separate or? Yep, sorry, yeah. Come on forwards.
May I approach again? My wife told me I was too loud, so I'll try to calm it down a little bit, but she says that often. My name is Benny Robinson, and yes, I do support providing disabled veterans with property tax relief. Our veterans gave us the freedom that we enjoy and the comfort to sleep at night, so in my opinion, this is a small token to their honor. I would offer these, keep it simple, but specific guidelines to establish exemptions. For any service connected or latent-related disability, as determined by the Veterans Administration, I'd like for you to consider the following would apply. Full tax exemption for 100% or a prorated exemption, and I don't know if you know or not, but the VA establishes a percentage of disability. So let's use an example, if you're 25% disabled, you'd get a 25% exemption and 35, and so it follows. A full tax exemption for 100% or a prorated exemption based on the percentage level of disability as established by the VA for all service-related disabilities. Such applies to the disabled veteran's primary residence or any primary residence for special disability-adapted housing. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but that is a term that the VA uses as for people who are confined to wheelchairs and have loss of limbs and so on and so forth. Surviving unmarried spouses and surviving underage children qualify for this stipulation. But I would like to carry this one step further. To be inclusive, I would ask that this be extended to unmarried spouses and underage children of veterans killed in action, veterans missing in action, of Gold Star parents, and prisoners of war. and prisoners of war. Thank you. I would ask that we pay homage to our veterans by adopting this into the Carroll County Code. Thank you.
Is this, is, is this because of a change in the general assembly last year that we have to enact this? Would you speak to that?
Gentlemen, I just have a brief draft of what I anticipate the ordinance would look like if the board wishes to take action. As you're aware, the Constitution of Virginia was amended by the voters at the last election in November. There was a, an issue where the Constitution provided for a, a tax exemption for one hundred percent service-related disabilities for veterans and their surviving spouses, but there was a provision that wouldn't permit the surviving spouse to move to another residence other than the one that he or she occupied with the veteran at the time of their death. And that seems unfair because it sort of penalized surviving spouse if, you know, as they get on in years, they might want to downgrade to a more manageable residence or move for any other reason, but that's sort of the, I, I think the prototypical reason for the amendment, to allow them to have some, some freedom to move to another residence and not lose the tax exemption. So as you're aware, the, the county already has an ordinance in place that provides for this tax exemption. What we would be doing would just add the ability of a surviving spouse to move to another residence and, and keep their tax exemption status. And of course, if there are any questions, I'm happy to discuss.
Anybody have any questions? So we're basically just following what state code is allowing us to do this.
State code and what the Constitution of Virginia provides.
So, one question, Mr. Robinson brought up another couple of points of allowing state or tax exemptions for other things other than what the state's requesting, is that correct? Or what the state's requiring or the state code?
Right. The only thing that was advertised for tonight was the specific one hundred percent service disabled. I'm happy to look at the state code to see if you can expand that. I know for killed in action, that is another exemption that we can take up at a later time. As far as MIA, Gold Star, I'm not aware of a specific authorization in the state code that would allow us to do that, but I'd be happy to look at it and report back to you on that.
Okay, so you could look at it and we could, Carroll County could go that further step.
If there's, if we can find some statutory authorization for that.
Right, yeah, with authorization, but what we're doing tonight is just supporting what Richmond has sent down.
Yeah, you're conforming your ordinance to the state code that's?
To the state code.
Yeah.
And that we could at a later date look at what he's brought up before us.
Absolutely, and certainly all those considerations are valid and, and very much appreciated as far as the sacrifice that veterans made.
Okay, that's just trying to get it all, all together.
Absolutely.
And this, this is just a public hearing? If we vote, will be next, next month, correct? Or can we vote now on this?
It's been.
Correct or the hearing?
It's been advertised, so you're holding the public hearing, so you could, you could take action tonight, or you could take the comments under advisement and, and take action at a later time.
All right, what do y'all think?
Does it create a problem for, does it create a problem for the Commissioner's office or the Treasurer's office if we, if we was to put it off to get some further information?
No, because we're just conforming to the language.
Okay.
Do we need to conform to it now and we can expand?
We got it on the agenda. If you want to, it's, y'all's prerogative, you want it, I need a motion.
I move that we conform to the state code about this area. I mean, we know we need to make some changes. We can, later on, if we can go farther, we may do that.
So that's a, yes.
Before you take a motion, I guess we conclude the public hearing.
Thank you. I would draw that attention.
I concluded the public hearing at seven oh two. Bob, do you have a comment?
I move that we adopt our ordinance about veterans and surviving spouses and so forth, amend the county code being similarity with state code.
We have a, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, start with you. Joe, do you?
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
I say yes, Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Lethal?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. I knew I'd get your name right somewhere.
I know, I think it's hard to remember.
All right. Start the public hearing at seven oh three for the twice-per-year tax collection, real estate. All right, I have these individuals wishing to speak. Bob Spencer?
I think twice-a-year tax collection is a bad idea. Seems to me that collecting twice a year will put an extra burden on the taxpayer. One reason being that you got one more deadline for the taxpayer to have to keep up with. And if the taxpayer forgets this new deadline, then he or she suffers the penalty for not paying on time. And I admit that I'm prone to forget deadlines. I expect my wife to keep up with deadlines, but unfortunately, she never does either, except for her birthday. Another way it creates a burden on the taxpayer is the likely timing of this extra payment. This new payment would likely be due in June. Now, the reason I suggest that that's a burden for us taxpayers is that the June payment would come shortly after the IRS income tax payments due, of course, April fifteenth. And on top of that, you have your state income tax, which is due May fifteenth, May the first, I mean. So that means we would have three tax payments come and due within a short period of time between April and June, the IRS, the state income tax, and then this county if we did this. I can understand how twice-a-year collections might help smooth the revenue inflows to the county. I also understand that some, that other counties do it this way, but I hope that we'd all would agree that just because someone else does things a certain way, it's not necessarily a good reason for us to do it that way. Also, collection cost has to be considered. Surely going to twice-a-year, collection cost will increase, I mean, that'll actually increase the staffing cost. Some of you may recall a few years back that there were delays in the Treasurer's office processing our real estate payment checks. In fact, the Carroll newspaper published a front page article about these delays, actually on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and one. And the Treasurer at that time, of course, Bonita Williams, was quoted as saying that the only solution to the delay problem is more staffing. So I can't believe that twice-a-year collection would not create more staffing costs. Finally, I wonder if going to twice-a-year might create a slippery slope. For instance, let's just say that we go to twice-a-year, and supposedly that's better than once a year. Well, what's this, what, what's to prevent someone from down the road saying that, well, let's go to quarterly, let's start paying quarterly? So I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I hope you take these factors into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Judy Jones?
Judy Jones. I'm opposed to the twice-per-year tax collection, and I think it will increase, as the gentleman just said, operating costs, need more employees, mailing cost, you know, we went up five cents on a stamp. But also, my fear is that it could be used as a vehicle to increase taxes in the future. An example is if anyone remembers Appalachian Power, you used to get billed every other month for your Appalachian Power, and then it went to every month. And then a year or so, two years later, that bill ended up being just as much as the every other month was. And I'm just not sure why there's a need to do a twice-a-year unless it's from bad management of the money. And you don't have enough, so you need to collect some in June. So I would ask that the board please vote against this twice-a-year collection. Thank you.
Thank you. Leanna?
I'm Leanna Suratt. I'm the Treasurer for the town of Hillsville. I was asked how this change would affect the town, so I'm here to share a few ideas that the effect would be on the town for billing twice a year. First of all, we want to make sure that we let you know that the town really enjoys our working relationship with the county, and we will respect whatever decision that you each decide. At this point, we're unsure, but since the Commissioner's office does do our assessment, it may be necessary for us to be consistent with the tax billing that the county elects as well. And if we were to move to the twice, twice-a-year billing, just like the previous people had spoken, the mail costs such as envelopes postage, it's going to double for us. Software conversion costs will also double, which is a large amount of our tax billing costs. And personnel to collect these revenues will be difficult for us as a town. We all wear multiple hats, we have tax billing, we have utility billing, payroll accounts, payable budgeting, and that time of year is very busy for us, so it would probably be necessary that we do additional personnel for that time of year. Essentially, these costs would more than double to collect the same amount of revenue that we collect with a once-a-year tax billing. That would mean that our taxpayers' dollars are not going to reach as far as they do currently with the way that we bill. This change could present other numerous logistical and financial challenges for our office. Our town council unanimously hopes that the billing will continue once per year. However, like I said previously, we want to work with the county and comply to whatever is necessary to make our tax billing as seamless as it has been in the past. Thank you each for the time to speak and share my humble opinion of how the potential effects could be on the town of Hillsville, and we greatly appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Lynda Montgomery?
Good evening, Mr. Hill and the Board of Supervisors. I don't think I have to tell you all what my name is, I think you know it from the past, but I've come tonight personally, speaking for myself personally, and also for my sister that sits back there. First of all, I thank you all for your time and your consideration. Also, I express my appreciation for your service to the taxpayers of Carroll County, and I have told you all that before. So I'm going to speak personally. As a taxpayer, I came to express an opinion on the issue of paying the taxes two times a year in June and December. There is a biblical scripture in Joshua twenty-four fifteen, and this will sum up myself and my household. In Joshua twenty-four fifteen, it reads, "As for me and my house," and this is where I am going to paraphrase, okay? "As for me and my house, we do not want to pay taxes two times a year. Each year after we have paid the taxes, we begin to save a little each month for the next year." And I might add that we always pay on time. As a matter of fact, I looked it up today, and the receipts say that we paid it October the tenth, almost two months early. But once that we've paid those taxes, we begin to save for the next year, a little bit each month. Once that they're paid, we kind of breathe a sigh of relief to know it is finished for another year. Also, we know that other things have to be done as the years go by, such as, not only, as he said, the IRS and the state, but also, I live in town and I have to pay the town taxes. Then along comes vehicle insurance, homeowner's insurance. So this is spaced out during the year, and I'm going to say, please, gentlemen, do not ruin my summer in June, okay? Because Christmas is already a financial bust because of the real estate and the property tax. And I look so forward to June and July, no homeowner's policy, no town taxes, no other taxes, just let me enjoy my summer, okay? Typically, as the lady said, and I'm not going to dwell on this, when things are divided into two payments, and she talked about AppCo, it's usually when you want to go up. And it doesn't hit, you know, it doesn't seem like it's quite as bad if it's in two parts rather than just one. Two things I request, if this is being done because of cash flow, then please, I know you can prepay, but who in the world can pay it and then turn around and prepay it for the next year, but, and, and I know that there's, are some that prepay by the month. If this is being done because of cash flow, then by all means, I request that you have a plan for those of us who still want to just pay in December. If this is being done because of a shortage of funds at the end of the year and you need the tax revenue coming in to pay the bills or have to borrow to pay the bills, then please, just makes, consider making some cuts in the budget. And I could probably tell you where that you could start, but I won't do that tonight because nobody elected me, okay? And the one thing that I would say about cutting in the budget, cuts in my past employment and what I did for a living for twenty-some years, cuts should begin at the top and not at the bottom. When we make cuts, I don't think we ought to start at the bottom and get the little man on the totem pole, okay? They should start at the top. Those of us that live in Carroll County, first of all, most of us live here by choice. We grew up here, didn't we, Mr. Martin? We live here by choice. But in Carroll County, we know what the job situation is, you know, hey, it's a struggle to live in this county, but we live here because we want to. Each and every one of us must live within our means because of the situation in the county. And just as the citizens have to live within their means, so should the departments within the county government live within its means. After all, please keep in mind, it is the taxpayer who is paying the bill. And once again, I say, thank you all. You, some of us have had personal conversations, and I think that I've kind of looked at you and said, "I expect you all to, ya, ya, ya," okay? But I do appreciate you, and you don't have to know my name.
Thank you, Mr. Governor. Kathy Patterson? Hi.
Carroll County Supervisors, staff members, and public, thank you for letting me talk today. I do oppose the adoption of the bi-yearly tax receipts that's proposed by Carroll County Supervisors in an attempt to stave off your cash flow problem. And this was quoted from the Galax Gazette in February eighth through eight, eight through ten nineteen, I mean, two thousand and nineteen. Based on that Galax Gazette article, one could allude that Carroll County staff members and supervisors feel that if two-thirds of all the counties in Virginia practice such a thing, then Carroll County should follow suit. Well, do that instead of looking at the real problems, notice I said "real" and underline that, causing the cash flow problem and developing, and develop a proactive, notice I said the word proactive, solution to solve that cash flow problem. In a democracy, budgets and financial management of those. In a democracy, budgets and financial management of those budgets are openly discussed so that taxpayers, that is, all of us who provide money to keep your organization going, are well-informed, and our money is well and appropriately spent. But we have a basic question here. Why is there a problem with cash flow? Please write that down. Why is there a problem with cash flow? Once again, each year, you develop and implement a budget that's well-advertised, and it covers all costs the county will incur during the upcoming year. And this budget's based on the current revenues, the current tax collections, past expenditure patterns, and even past trends in revenue collections. I'm terrible about remembering my taxes, but this year, doggone it, I got them in. Got them in, and I paid double, so give me a pat on the back. Now, we know that the expenditures need to be made based on that revenue cycle. And we need to know that the bulk of that revenue comes in in December. You know, that's just a given. December and January is when our revenue sources come in. Now, there shouldn't be any unexplained or unexpected costs at all. All of that was taken care of in your annual budget. Receipts are collected, payments are dispersed on a monthly basis, and based on state code, based on all the things that we believe in, and it's pre-planned. We know each month that bills will be paid. We know that each month where things come in and things go out. I'm sorry, I have to read. But we also know that there's emergency costs. And often, those emergency costs, we should have line items that take care of those. And most budgets, and this budget included, being in your budget, has that built in. Now, if there's things beyond those emergency costs, then that department, notice I said "that department" or "that agency," should absorb those costs through layoffs, freeze of funding, or a temporary reduction in services. Now, in some cases, departments may have to wait until the next year to get the adequate funding to fix their problem. But once again, it can be done, and it has been done. And as I said again, over and over, all spending is planned, it's prescribed, it's routine, and it's based upon historical data trends of collection and revenue receipts. Bi-yearly receipt of the tax money is not going to alleviate a system that does not stick to budgetary allocations. And bi-yearly receipts of tax monies will not alleviate a system that does not afford equal pay or equal benefits for all staff members across the board. And bi-yearly receipts of money won't eliminate the need for legal, high-tech, and emerging industries in our county. And bi-yearly receipts of tax money will not, and I repeat, will not eliminate poor, inconsistent, or non-standardized budget processes and management. Those have to be fixed. And as a taxpayer whose family has been here for over 200 years, we trace back to 1790 and probably before that, if you look at when they were trying to get their land and trying to wheel and deal on it, we've always trusted the supervisors to do the right thing. But right now, you, the supervisors, you know, we've entrusted this in you. You need to do a better job, and you need your staff to do a better job. Now, as an administrator once told me, your lack of planning is not my problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Debbie Goode?
Good evening, members of the Board. Thank you for letting me come before you tonight. And I guess I'm in the minority here tonight because really and truly, when y'all address this two times a year taxation, it's a smart move. Anytime that the Board that we have elected is looking for ways to save the taxpayers' money, then it's a good thing. And anytime that y'all have to borrow general obligation money and pay interest on it, it's hurting all of us taxpayers. It's hurting every one of us. And I've heard, I own land in Patrick County, and Patrick County has been with twice-a-year taxation for at least 10 or 12 years. The only year that it was a bother to us was the very first year that it was implemented because you paid your one-year's taxes in full in December, and then you had your next installment due in June. There is no double billing. You get one statement, you tear off 1/3 of that sheet, and you send it in with your June payment. You tear off another 1/3 of that sheet in December, and you send it in with your December payment, and you keep 1/3 for your records. I always mail mine. They always send me two-winded envelopes, so that I have one for my June payment and one for my December payment. And I really don't think that this is, and I'll go this much further, as someone said, well, it's probably a tool to raise our taxes. Since the time that Patrick County has implemented twice-a-year taxation, there has not been a raise in our taxes in Patrick County, period. I don't know, I have never called into the Patrick County Treasurer's office, and there has been any more staff. I mean, I don't know that for a fact, but it always seems like it's the same two or three people that answer the phone every time. I actually think that it was a good idea, and thank you for letting us come here tonight.
Thank you. Benny Robinson?
I would ask that you vote no on this proposal. Here's why. You are unassumingly placing the county's planning incapabilities on our citizens, businesses, and especially those with cyclical flat cash flow occupations such as farmers. It is difficult to appreciate this challenge. What's the scale of the problem? I couldn't find a better analogy, so I'm going to use it anyway. Is this the size of a bread box or a bread truck? Cash flow peaks and valleys are not an uncommon occurrence. In governments, and especially some friends of mine who have dealt with, being government contractors have dealt with the recent government shutdown, businesses and households deal with cash flow problems every day. Highly problematic to me is the fact that we pay highly competitive Fortune 500 salaries to county administrators that cannot yield a solution to this common occurrence. You are simply throwing the problem over the wall and admitting your own incompetence. Other alternatives? Why not give the people and businesses who wish to pay early? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Why not give the people and businesses a choice that complements their specific cash flow, yearly, biannually, quarterly, monthly? In today's electronic banking, you might offer an incentive for early pay. That could be a win-win and cheaper than anticipation revenue notes. There's a plethora of techniques and electronic solutions. Could it be inabilities to work together within the county administrator's office, the treasurer and the commissioner's office impede solutions? My prediction is that twice-yearly tax collections will not remedy this problem. Without financial skills, this initiative becomes provisional. You are simply treating the symptom and ignoring the disease. Replace this philosophy that we've got to bring in what you spend. Let's turn that around. Let's spend what we collect and launch a rainy day fund. Perception most always overpowers reality. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a comment? Close the hearing at 7:27. Does anybody have a motion they wish to make?
Yeah, we could have. Put my comments in.
Oh, you all say, all right?
Can I?
Absolutely.
Okay. When this was first mentioned, I opposed it. I want to stay once a year. I have talked to a lot of the, not all of them, but a lot of them in the Fancy Gap District. They're farmers, and I think the collection time would be February and August, I think, was the ones. Anyway, probably the farmers, some of them buy cattle in the spring, sell them in the fall. They sell in September and October. They don't have the money to pay the tax. They're orchard people. They pick the peaches or are picking peaches, paying labor, and they don't have the money to pay the taxes in August, so they oppose to it. And I don't really feel like it's going to solve our problem. If we're falling short in a year, then we start collecting twice a year. Eventually, it's going to catch us there, and we'll be right in the same problem. So I oppose twice a year.
Anybody else on the Board?
Could I speak?
Yes.
Could I speak?
Yeah.
When this was brought before the Board of Supervisors, I listened intently to the idea of twice-a-year tax collection. At first, I was totally against it for reasons that people have brought forward. But when we got to talking about it and discussing it, I thought it was going to be a better plan for citizens in Carroll County. And my understanding, and we haven't adopted anything yet, and we're listening, that's why we had a public hearing, but my understanding was this was going to relieve the December burden of 100% taxes. You could break them up in twice a year. We're not going to collect more taxes. We're not going to collect the same amount twice a year. I think a lot of people thinks, well, I pay $1,000 in December. Oh, gosh, they want $1,000 in June and $1,000 in December. No, we're talking about cutting that in half. You pay 500 in June, 500 in December. There was also a mention, when we talked about doing this, of setting it up on monthly payments, where if you owe $1,000 for 2019, you can divide that into 12 payments and pay that monthly, which we thought would be a relief to the citizens so they didn't have to cough up that huge amount of money by December the 5th. Maybe I'm wrong. But that was my intake on it. That was the reason that I even considered going to twice-a-year taxes. There's probably some more things I need to hear, but as far as I stand on this, no, we're not going to double our tax rates. We're not going to use this as an avenue to collect more taxes off of you. I promise you that from the Lawford District. This was a thing that was brought to my attention that I thought would help citizens spread out their money. And there's a lot of people in this county that's on monthly fixed incomes. And we thought, or I thought, not we, I thought, that by you finding out in the early spring, say, spring of 2020, what your tax obligation was to the county for 2019, you would have more time to come up with that money and pay that money than the way a system is now, where you get noticed in October, September, October, and it's all due December 5th, or you get penalized. I just thought that this was a better plan to allow people to be able to budget their money and manage their money easier. Maybe I'm wrong. I need to do some more checking on this. If 2/3 of the state of Virginia is doing it, and then the one lady spoke up and said that she deals with it because she has land in a different county, I think there's been a misconception of what we're trying to do. I really do. I think people took it and ran with it to the bad side, to the dark side. Oh, they're going to collect taxes twice. They're going to raise our taxes mid-year. They're going to do all this. I don't see that happening, and that's not the way that it was explained to me. But thank you all for being here and listening and sharing your ideas with me. It's given me something to think about. Thank you.
Any other comments? Bob?
I swore I would never speak at another public hearing, okay? However, one of the things that hits the Board of Supervisors that is impossible to budget for is the regional jail. We were ahead of Montgomery County in number of people we had down there, and their population's four times what ours is. And then, when you send them to, when you arrest them, and I'm not saying turn the criminals loose, when you arrest them and they go to the regional jail, many times, that affects the family. So it's not Child Protective Services, what is the broad category?
CSA.
Children's Services Act.
Children's Services Act comes into play. So we send Dad or Mom or both to regional jail, and somebody's got to take care of the children, okay? And now, how much more than what we have budgeted for is that cost for regional jail that we are looking at the bill, extra bill for?
For this year, for this budget year?
Yes, for both of those areas.
Both of those areas. For the New River Valley Regional Jail, it's trending as if it's going to be $140,000 over budget.
And the child services?
Child services and social services combined. Those two categories are trending almost a million dollars more in expenditures this year over last year.
All right. And the two-pay system, I don't like any pay system, all right? However, the thoughts of us coming up with a million dollars, and it's already happened at least once in the past, last year, last two years. And we have desperately tried to save money and build up a rainy day fund, but it's mighty hard to build up a rainy day fund when you get hit with million-dollar things year after year that we haven't budgeted for. I agree with everything that's been said, but I'm just telling you, I'm scratching my head on that million dollars. And I don't know. I guess we could double the taxes for next year, and we could build up a big surplus, maybe, but I guarantee the jail thing would go to 2 million then, so it wouldn't accomplish anything.
It's already at 2 million. It's already at 2 million. And when I started 10 years ago, the total annual cost was 700,000.
Yeah. And one of the things, in speaking what Bob was talking about, if you don't understand, those are three categories that we cannot say no to. That's state rules and state regulations. I mean, if they send us a bill for an extra million dollars, we've got to find it and come up with it. And it's tough. I didn't realize that until I got on the Board. And those are three categories that are costing this county a lot, a lot, a lot of money. And we cannot, yeah, we can sit here at our budget meeting next month or in April and say, we're going to give regional jail 2 million this year, and if they come up and say, no, we need 3, we've got to come up with the other one. That's just state law. Our hands are tied.
I want to expand a little bit on what Bob said about the CSA. I serve on the local social services board also, so I've got a hard education on how the CSA works. Rex is on the CPMT, which is part of that too, and so is Steve. And what happens, just to explain y'all a little bit more, give you a little more information, these kids go into foster care. We're mandated by state law to provide for that foster care. I think right now, there's about 90, 88 in foster care. And if they're not, they have, those kids have to be seen by a member of the social services. And if they're not, they have, those kids have to be seen by a member of the social services staff every month.
Health bill, dental bill.
We take care of it all. And there's not enough homes in Carroll County to take these foster kids in. So they have to place these kids wherever they can find a place to place them. Well, with state, the state laws set up like it is with social services, you can't let someone in that other locality go check on these kids that month. Everybody, we have to send someone each month to go check on those kids.
What if they're at Lynchburg?
It doesn't matter. Northern Virginia, and typically, northern Virginia and eastern Virginia are where a lot of these kids end up. And they have to go out there and visit them, spend time. They have to have contact with everybody that child comes in contact with that day. I mean, that, in that period of time. So it's hard for them to do it in a day's time. Sometimes it takes them two days, you know, to do it. And that's, you've got to pay travel expenses, you've got to pay all that for them to go do that. My thoughts is that the state ought to allow us to be able to let someone in that area do it, but the state was, will not come across with that yet. They've not decided to do that yet. And then that's just, makes it extremely hard to budget, because you never know how many kids you want to have in foster care. And we've increased these budgets over the last couple of years. It's not like we've just left them alone. We've increased them tremendously each year. And not defending anything at all here. I agree that we, that there's lots of things that could be done to make our budget a lot better. But I just, those are the two things that bother me the most, is our jail expenses and our C S A expenses, because we can't control those two things. I mean, I guess we could ask the sheriff to quit arresting people. I mean, that might stop it. I don't think that's something anybody wants to do, but I just wanted to share that. I'm neither here nor there with the twice-a-year tax collection. It doesn't matter to me.
Personally, I'd like to see a two-pay system that the first pay is optional, that if you wanted to pay it, you could, and if you paid it, maybe you got a 5% discount. But that's not our choice. State regulations lay things out as to what we can do.
Can I say something about the incentive?
Yes.
That has been mentioned tonight. Quite a few years back, I actually spoke to the board about giving in the incentive to early payers. And so I checked on it with the state. And because Virginia is a commonwealth, there is no incentive that can be offered because they are ruled by what's called the Dillon Rule. So you can't offer any incentives. And we have a, you know, you can pay every month. It's just optional. It's up to you, ever how much or whatever. You can pay each month. But the one thing that's going to impact you guys, and you know, this is your decision totally, but you're going to have to set your budget levy, your levy on your tax by April the 1st in order to get the billings out and the tax tickets out. But that's with giving people a 30-day window before the first payment. If you go with the June 5th payment, by code, you don't have to have the tax tickets out but 14 days prior to the due date. But, you know, I've always liked the 30-day at least. So that's just a couple of things I wanted to mention.
All right. Thank you, Benita.
Yes.
Anybody else? Well, I want to say a couple words. That's one of the reasons we did the fund balance policy. We have money set aside to cover shortage between when taxes are due or when they're finally paid. Back several years ago, probably 10, 15 years ago, they didn't follow the front debt, fund balance policy. Also, we incurred considerable debt. That's another reason I would like to have a debt policy. These are two things, is two other tools that we have to try to solve this. There's nothing prevents people from going and paying their taxes like Benita said, monthly. They can do it quarterly. That's, you can do that anytime you want to. You can set it up a payment. Is that correct, Benita?
Yes, you can.
So all those things?
It's all, you know, it's like you're voluntarily, you know, doing your own budget and ever how you want to pay or what you want to pay. It's up to the person.
Even pay online, can't you, Benita?
Yes.
Yep.
Sure can.
But anyway, that's, I think that's all I've got to say. Anything else?
If we get them early and we spend them early, we're like getting payday. Two paydays a month and don't get one next month, we're out of money, you know? I mean.
I think there's probably stuff that we could do. You know, maybe set a drop-dead date on the spending in June so it doesn't carry over till next year. I don't know how much that would be. That's something I think the staff should look at. I don't know anything else. But anyways, no one else has a comment? I'll close the public hearing at 7:43. All right, that poses a stamp. Do we, does anybody want to make a motion? Or you want to hold off and wait and study the thing? All right. Committee appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table committee appointments to next meeting maybe?
Got a motion to table the committee appointments? Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Start with you, Joe?
Yes.
Phil? I say yes?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Bob? Okay.
And with this committee appointments, while there's still a decent crowd here?
Yes.
If anybody would like to serve on a committee, there's a form on the website. You can go in and fill out. And I know that right now we're looking for IDA, and I think we'll have IDA coming up in May too also. So library?
Library.
Just go in and fill out the form, and we'll get you involved in the county if we can.
If you're, you want to assist the county in any way, volunteer, that's, they don't pay you much. More of a volunteer type thing, but it's, that's kind of how I started out, volunteering for stuff. And that's, you know, I think it'd be a great, great thing.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could we bring up the governor's?
Yes.
You're next.
Sorry, Bob, I didn't have it on my computer.
All right.
But it was on my notes. Thank you, Bob.
A stated fact that when I die, I'm not going to demand justice. I'm going to ask for mercy because when you're born into this world, you're a sinner. And until you ask forgiveness, you're not okay. I've sat on the fence too long and ignored stuff that I knew wasn't right as a Christian person. And I find it amazing that the governor's in hot water, moreover, he blacked his face than what he did, he said about abortions. And for folks that haven't paid attention, what our esteemed governor said, what he wanted was, he wanted a post-birth abortion, meaning that mom was on the table and delivered a baby. They, he wanted to give the mother time in discussions with the doctor to abort the baby. And my understanding is that, that like one vote coming out of committee, and then the whole, the whole House or Senate would have had to vote on it. But that's wrong. And as a Christian person, it's wrong. And all these, all the people in here and on the board, we need to, will it do any good to do what I'm going to propose in a minute? I doubt it. But you got to start with yourself. And Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the county administrator to send the governor, lieutenant governor, and the attorney general and the people involved on that committee with the strongest disagreement that we can possibly give for abortion in the state of Virginia. And this murder for a baby that's born, and he's, he or she is peeing on the table and cooing on the table and trying to focus and looking around, his heart's beating and he's breathing, and somebody says, well, I think we ought to abort. Well, it ain't abortion. It's murder. And my motion is that we authorize the county administrator to send his letter in the strongest possible word to this committee that voted and the, those three government leaders in the state. I am a Republican, but this is not Republican and Democrat. This is, as a Christian person, how can we sit still and let a governor propose to have a baby born laying there breathing, and they take a rod and run it up the back of their head into their brain?
I just have to say something. I'm sorry. I am sorry, but the publicity that this has been getting is not correct. It is a very limited time that these procedures are done. But as a woman and as a mother of girls, that has to be an option. I will never sacrifice my daughters that I have raised and loved for a grandchild that I do not know. And you do not know what kind of medical conditions can happen that can jeopardize a woman's life. Babies are diagnosed as antiseptic, that they have no brains, and it's not found out until late term. And this whole thing has been blown completely out of proportion. And I respectfully suggest that my Lawford person not sign onto this because this has nothing to do with Democrat, Republican. It has nothing to do with murder. This is a medical procedure that is between a woman, her doctor. It is a moral decision between a woman and her God. And we have no right to, as citizens of this county. And I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, I love you today.
I love you and your two daughters and husband.
I will never sacrifice my children.
It's wrong.
It may be wrong in circumstances, but this is not something that women just decide at eight and a half months pregnant, that I want to be pregnant. That's bull crap. That is propaganda that the people of this county, of this state are feeding, y'all. This is not something that women just up and decide one day that they don't want to be pregnant.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a motion on the table.
I'm got.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Would you prefer a resolution?
Resolution would be fine. If we want to do the will of the people in this county that's been said at several meetings in the past, I can tell you what overwhelming majority of citizens and people in this county will say about this procedure.
Should, I'm just a question because we got a couple of different things. You said write a letter? Would you prefer a letter or you prefer a resolution?
A resolution.
If you prefer a resolution, I'd ask the second and Mr. Martin to withdraw the motion and make a new motion for a resolution. What's on the table right now is a letter.
Okay, then I withdraw that if somebody withdraw their second. And I move that we send a resolution in to the heads of our Virginia government and to the people on that committee condemning the act of, I call it, post-delivery murder. Okay?
All right, this is the second.
Second.
Want to make that adjustment? Start with you, Joe Neil.
Can we have a discussion first?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Here's Dr. Littrell.
I cannot vote on a resolution. I have not seen.
Okay.
Well, can, can the county administrator design one? And we can vote on it or approve it or not approve it at the March meeting?
All right. If you, if your second will adjust to your change in your motion?
To be approved at the March meeting?
To be presented to the?
To be presented. Presented to the board next meeting.
Right.
All right. We got that? Does that make sense? Everybody got that clear?
Yeah.
That, that works? All right, Joe Neil, what do you say?
Are you going to have a discussion on this?
Sorry? Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm trying to get you on too quick.
Yeah, and I agree with Dr. Littrell. I can't vote for anything that I haven't read and put my name on it. And I've got a lot of mixed emotions on this whole thing, and it's at a state level right now. I have read that they've tabled it for another year. The state of Virginia General Assembly has tabled this for another year. So I think they're very mixed about it also. But I would like to agree with Dr. Littrell that I won't sign anything that I haven't read yet. Thank you.
Well, I don't think we saw anything on this 87 people about the water thing. It's just a motion, and I guess it's all right to vote for that you haven't seen. But murdering a baby, hello, that's a minor thing.
Wait just, whoa, whoa, wait just a minute. Wait just a minute. You're putting words in my mouth.
That's what you said. You didn't see anything on here.
Hang on.
Joe?
All right, we got a motion. I think we've got enough on discussion. We have motion and a second. A letter will be prepared to give to the board next month.
A resolution.
Yep. Resolution. All right. Start with you, Joe. Yes and no?
Yes.
So yes, I say yes? Bobby?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
All right. Motion carried.
If the rest of the board doesn't feel comfortable with it, that's fine. But I'm going to speak out. I just?
I understand, Bob. I understand. All right, citizens' time.
We've already had everybody speak. Does anybody else wish to say anything?
Yeah.
Just come on forward and speak your name.
Okay, my name is John Woodley. I, I live on Millstone Road, as do these people behind me here. And the condition of our road, well, we live on an area between, let's see, Joy Ranch and Sandy Level is roughly near Crooked Creek. The condition of our road is terrible. There's ruts that are a foot, foot and a half deep on both sides in some areas. There's, the gravel is gone. It's just a muddy mess that's dangerous to drive on, quite frankly, because it's a curvy road there. And there are some places where if you slide off the road on that muddy surface, you're in a, you're in, your two wheels are in a ditch that are, you know, you're not going to get out of without a tow truck. And there's some areas where if you slide off the road closer to Joy Ranch, you're going down 15 feet into a creek. So we'd just like to let you, the commissioners here, know that we think the conditions of our road are abysmal. And we'd like something done about it as soon as possible.
Is that the road behind Crooked Creek Fishery on the back end?
Yeah, because that road comes out through.
Yeah, uh-huh. Between Joy Ranch and Sandy Level. I mean, there's other areas farther up, farther up that are bad too. But I mean, I, I'm speaking for our area, and I think where we live, it's probably the worst of Millstone.
Have you contacted the VDOT?
Yes, we have.
Yes.
We've contacted the Virginia DOT several times and have gotten no?
We can, yes.
Can I, can I fill in on this?
Sure.
I have a good, a couple of good friends that live on Millstone, the Banoff.
I have a good, a couple of good friends that live on Millstone, the Banoffs. I don't know if you know the Banoffs or not.
They're right by us, too.
And they expressed their concern about that road to me. And he understood, I understood that you guys weren't getting anywhere with the 1-800 for roads.
Right.
Okay. I did, three weeks ago, talk to the Carroll County residency agent, engineer for Carroll County. He did go out and drive the roads. He did meet with John and Diane a couple of weeks ago, and he agreed totally that your roads are in horrible shape. They, and I'm just passing on what was told to me, that they're going to do temporary fixes this winter, but they are going to address the whole road this spring. And he agreed totally that it is dangerous.
Are we on a list?
Do what?
Are we on a paving list or anything?
Well, what you have to do on that is, I think it's March or April.
April, when we normally have road meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, in April, you can have your supervisor put Millstone, what's called a six-year plan, which would do a real rustic tar and gravel type situation on it. But just to let you know, the resident engineer has went out there and looked at it, and he has, he met with John and Diane a couple of weeks ago. He agreed totally, it is extremely dangerous. He said that there's not a lot they can do for it this winter. They, he was going to try to do some, like, filling in the holes and doing stuff, but he told John and Diane that they will be on it this spring when the weather breaks and make it a safer road.
Okay. Very good.
I just wanted to share that with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I was, I was through there the other day.
It's horrible.
It's terrible. It is, it's really terrible.
And there's new rock left on the road?
No, it's mud.
Right, yeah, right.
It's a true dirt road.
And when I say that, when they do put the new gravel on, in the last year and a half, I've lost four tires from the gravel going up, and I've lost tires.
Yeah, we all have.
We all have.
Right. But it is being addressed, I promise you that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Mr. Dean, after we spoke the other day?
Yes, ma'am.
They did go out and look at that road for potential puncture issues. And they did not spot any while they were out there.
Because there's no gravel.
There's no gravel, man.
With the new gravel on.
Yeah. It's sharp points and jagged points, even if they could use somewhat different kind of gravel on it.
Okay. They did go out there and inspect it.
They go right through your tires.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Citizens' time. All right, go to the board of supervisors' time. Start with you, Joe.
Okay. Thank everyone for being here tonight. Good room, got a lot of information. I hope that we both learned something. I learned a lot of things tonight about the way citizens feel about things that we're considering doing. I hope that, it was said earlier in the meeting, communications, communications. A lot of people don't understand what we try to do because we don't hear from you all, we don't understand what our decisions are, how that it affects you. But I really, I appreciate the communication, the stability, and yes, together, we'll get things fixed. We will get things fixed. It don't work, we can't fix it today or tonight or tomorrow, but one of the things, and this is my second year on this board, is I understand this board hears people, and we trying to do the right thing. And I think a lot of people maybe learned tonight about the budget. The budget totally blew me away last year, my first year on the board. You know, I thought you set a budget, that's all they get. And there is areas in our budget where we don't have that say-so. They send a bill and we have to pay it. And I hope you guys understand that and will work with us. But we are diligently, in this budget season, looking at making things better in this county. And I know it don't seem like it because it don't happen overnight, but I promise you that, as far as I'm concerned, we are working very hard to make things better. Thank you again.
Phil?
Thank you all for being here. I agree, we do get surprises from the jail, from the child custody services. The bill just keeps increasing, but until we get more money collecting more pounds is not going to solve the problem. I promise. And thank you all for coming out and speaking tonight, and I hope we do the right thing.
Robbie?
I'm, like Joe, I'm on my fourth year, still learning a lot. I thoroughly enjoy what I've done and what we're doing in this county, and it does take time to make things better. And without feedback, we don't know which way to go lots of times. We have to have feedback and just look out and see a group of people here. It makes it a lot, I don't know, more inspiring because you look out at sometimes and there's nobody back here but our faithful three or four back in the corner that are always here. And believe me, Roger's not that good to look at all the time. But, but-
Roger's not spoke either.
But I do appreciate you all, and I appreciate the patience, and I appreciate, you know, the input that we get. A lot of times, we disagree with things, but you know what? We're all here to try to make this a better place for us all. And our budget issues, I, it just, to look at the CSA and the jail expenditures sometimes just absolutely kills me. And it's all a cycle. It's a vicious cycle. It's what our society has become. These people have kids, they get, the parents get locked up, the kids have nowhere to go, and we can't leave the kids hanging. We just really can't do that. They got to be taken care of. And I guess that's about all I have to say for tonight. Thank you all so much.
Dr. Littrell?
Thank you. It was good to see such a crowd at night. I think it was a good interchange of information from back and forth. And I think all of you do understand that a budget, unfortunately, is not set in concrete. It's basically an educated guess what's going to happen the next year as far as expenditures, as well as revenue, and it's a forecast. And sometimes we do have to make adjustments in both directions, so we do the best we can. Nikki works very, very hard to get the numbers as correctly as we can, but sometimes we get surprises like we've already talked about. I pay taxes in two counties also, like Debbie does, and one is twice a year and one is like in Carroll County, just once a year. I actually prefer the twice a year because it spreads it out over a period of time instead of all at one time. But I also understand the arguments that you made, that you did not like that, so we'll take all that into consideration. But I do think, no matter what we decide, it's too late to do anything this year because of what Benita said, she had to get the tax tickets out. So I personally think we should take it under advisement and study it some more and get some more input from other people. That's my opinion, that's not a vote. But I do appreciate everybody that was here tonight, and I made notes what everybody said. And Millstone, I think, is actually in my district. And I'll send an email to Lisa Hughes, who is our engineer for this area, and see what she has to say, so I'll try to do that for you. The last thing I'm going to bring up is, I had a citizen talk about one of our newest industries or actual businesses in town, Adala General on 58 and the intersection of 620. And he said, since they've opened, it's been a nightmare trying to get out of either Forest Oak or Colson Church onto 58. And he asked me what would be possible to get a study for a traffic light. I personally don't like traffic lights, but I know how difficult it is to get into 58 sometimes. And so I'm asking staff, how do we do that, just to get some kind of study from VDOT to see what it's-
Why are you talking to Lisa about those things or not? You have to do-
I'll do that. I don't know if it's a thing we started as a county or not, so I'll be glad to ask Lisa.
Don't do it pretty bad.
My wife run through that grass, well, where they put hay the other day, tried to find a road to get in.
But anyway, it is a difficult intersection to negotiate. That's all, Phil.
Thank you. All right, Bob?
And Jo Neil, if I was short with you, I apologize.
No problem.
I really feel that I'm under conviction about speaking out about this issue, and I just am overpowered with my feelings about it. And I'll be quiet and wish everybody a happy week coming up.
All right, thank you, Bob. I've got a couple of things. Robbie and I had a discussion with some folks the other night about ways that we might be able to address the jail, other things, maybe as a combination of everybody in the county as far as different social services, sheriff's department, Commonwealth's attorney, we talked to Nathan tonight. And so I'm going to ask Robbie if he will chair a committee, whoever he needs to invite to see, just look at things and see what we can maybe accomplish, or, you know, it's, there's a lot of stuff out there that we may or may not be able to address, but at least we will try. And if anybody else is interested in serving with him, just let him know. And also, I'm going to put, I'm going to create an ad hoc committee, well, I guess it's replace the old personnel committee, put Jo Neil, myself on the personnel committee to look at personnel issues with the county. And Robbie and Phil, I'm going to put you all on a transification committee, look at, one of the things that was brought up was about marking county vehicles and things like that and whatever else y'all want to address. And Bob and Tom, if y'all were interested, it's just, you know, in the past, and we have met with school board members, you know, 202, if y'all were interested in initiate that, starting up before the committee-
I'd be glad to serve on anything, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and I appreciate everybody coming in. This is the most informative night we've had as far as participation from the public about your ideas, about all number of things that we've discussed tonight, and I really appreciate you coming out. Have a safe trip and on the way home. Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. If anybody's interested in the CSA and how it operates from the state, we are going to have a representative-
That's right.
From Richmond coming at the next meeting to give us a presentation that I think you would find very informative. So I'll invite everybody to come back again and hear that gentleman talk to us next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me there. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Adjourn.
When is there a budget meeting?
Oh, look, Nikki-
March 7.
March 7.
March 7. And we need to-